The Mazda?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring it up. You know, I don't know how many more units. I assume need two to four more buildings. Two hundred residences. This is, this is a very, it's very dangerous. I, I live up here. Dangerous to make it right or left. We need something.
Good morning and welcome to the November sixth, twenty twenty five zoning board of adjustment meeting. Now, if any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker forms to the left of the dice. Please fill out the request with the agenda number on the, of the item you would wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. At this time, we would like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. Now, if you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so that the meeting is not disrupted. The public hearing on item. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Item one is for the approval of the October twenty third, twenty twenty five zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve from Karen? Do we have a second? Second from Haven. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Good morning, Chair Commission. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Item two now is number two, five, V A zero, two, zero, the Boulevard Edition. Staff?
Good morning, Chair Commission. The variance before you is a variance to reduce the front yard setback from fourteen feet to seven feet for a non-enclosed porch. We are at the property located at twelve sixteen Fulton Street. This property is zoned medium density residential district with a future land use of urban neighborhood. This property is accessed also from Fulton Street, which is classified as a local street. The applicant here is requesting to replace a deck that was originally constructed with this house. So this property, as it exists right now, is point one, one acres or approximately four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one square feet. The house was originally built in nineteen thirteen and originally included a seven foot by twenty-two foot non-enclosed covered porch. So due to deterioration, that porch has been removed. And the applicant is requesting to rebuild that structure with the same footprint in the same location. However, it is seven feet from the front property line at its southeast corner and eight and a half feet from the front property line at its southwest corner. So originally, this structure did have a legal non-conforming setback because of the year that it was built. However, once that structure came down, by code, it is not allowed to be reconstructed unless in compliance with current code regulations, which requires a fourteen-foot front yard setback for a non-enclosed porch in this zoning district. So that is what the applicant is bringing forward to you today is just the variance request to reduce that setback to allow this garage, or this porch to be reconstructed in its original location. If we were to strictly adhere to the code in this particular situation, the house where it exists right now is approximately fourteen feet from the front property line on the southwest cor, or southeast corner, excuse me, and about fifteen and a half feet from the south west corner. So strict application of code would not allow for a garage, or a porch to even be reconstructed on this side of the house. This is the side of the house that overlooks Fulton Street. I do want to point out that Fulton Street in this particular location is a hundred-foot right-of-way. So in staying in accord with the general purpose and intent of a front yard setback requirement, one of those intentions is to provide for adequate separation from the right-of-way. So I do want to point out that Fulton Street does have a significant right-of-way in this location and the porch will be approximately thirty-five feet from the curb edge of Fulton Street, so still provides adequate separation there. So here is some elevation drawings of the porch as they are wanting to reconstruct it. And there again, you can see it's seven feet wide. It does have a one-foot overhang, which is fine by code. So here is the property as it currently exists. You can see that the posts have already gone back up, but this is the location where this porch will be replaced. Another thing that we recommend to consider with regard to this neighborhood is that the age of this neighborhood in general does mean that there are several properties in this area that do have legal non-conforming setbacks that do not conform to current regulations, meaning there are other structures. You can see the neighbor's portrait there also does not necessarily meet the required twenty-foot front yard setback. So this is not out of alignment with the neighborhood. This is Fulton Street. You can see that hundred-foot right-of-way because it does split in this location. And then this just is a little bit more of a general idea of what is occurring on both sides of the property with regard to where those structures are placed as well. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of this variance request with the stipulations noted in the staff report. And I'll stand for any questions. And Todd, the property owner, is in the audience as well, if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions from the planning commission? And seeing no speaker request forms? I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Eric Higginson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any historical implications affecting this?
Yes, thank you for asking and reminding me. This property is located within the historic district environs. So, or at least a portion of the property is. Special projects planning did run this by the state to see if this is something that will require historic review. It does not at this point in time with what he's proposing. However, in the future, if he were to enclose this or expand upon it or anything like that, that will require a separate historic determination.
Thank you. So given the nature of the neighborhood and the similar challenges in the next-door porch, I'm a huge fan of porches. I think there's a lovely social interaction that happens from the people on their porches and the people walking by in the neighborhood. I think whoever came up with the idea of porch should be praised. I'm going to be supporting this. Thanks.
The chair, excuse me, the chair recognizes Mike Quasim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve with all stipulations.
We have a motion to approve with stipulations from Mike and the second from, from Pat.
Mr. Chair.
And the chair recognizes Vicki.
If we could have the motion maker cite criteria, perhaps minimum adjustment necessary and does not create any adverse impact on the neighborhood.
And to that, I would say ditto.
Pat?
If I could include that in our, in my motion.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any additional comments? Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, there being no further, well, I'm sorry, do, does the staff any, have any, any, any more information regarding the, for the zoning board of adjustment meeting?
No, thank you.
Okay. There being no further business, do we have a motion to move, to adj, to adjourn the zoning board of adjustment? We have a motion from Mike and a second from Eric. And the zoning board of adjustment unanimously carried and the adjourned, we adjourned the meeting, the zoning board of adjustment meeting. We move on to, we will now commence, of course, with the city of Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for November sixth, twenty twenty five. And again, I'm going to read the housekeeping items for you. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the planning commission agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Now, please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dice. Please continue to keep your cellphone or electronic device off or in silent mode. And again, if you need to take a call, please step out into the hallway so that the meeting is not disrupted. Items, items one through six have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by a single vote. Now, any item may be removed from the consent calendar by the planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for a separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item four, two, five, P D zero, three, one. Item five, two, five, U R zero, three, one. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are finals unless any party appeals to the, the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing on the Department of Community, rather, to the Department of Community Development by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following the action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through six that staff would like to remove from the consent calendar for separate consideration?
No, thank you.
Are there any items on the consent, items one through six that the planning commission would like to remove for the consent calendar for separate consideration? Okay. Are there any items one through six that the audience member would like to remove from the consent calendar for separate consideration? I do not have any request forms for that. And the chair will entertain a motion to approve items on the consent calendar, items one through five, in accordance with the staff's recommendations, one through six, with the exception of item six. We have a motion from Eric. Sorry, a motion from Pat? Oh, okay. Or in a second from Eric. Okay, the items one through five are hereby closed. And we have item six. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sorry, thank you. What about item six? We now have item six.
And if we could go to Haven for his question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Haven?
I, I did read the, the report and it seemed, I, I pulled it off the consent calendar just because it seems like it's something that's, it's pretty significant. Somebody's put in a, a lot of time in it. And it has some hopefully very positive things that, for, for a future in, in Rapid City. So I just thought it would be good to have a little explanation of, of why, why this report was done.
Absolutely. I have a brief presentation, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes staff.
Yeah, brief presentation to go through?
Thank you.
So this item is the Safe Streets and Roads for All Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. This is the draft report. So the background of this, in two thousand and twenty-three, Rapid City was awarded a grant of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to develop this plan through the United States Department of Transportation's Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program. And the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program really looks at improving roadway safety for all users of the roadway, not just motorists, but bicyclists, pedestrians, transit users, micro mobility users, anybody that's within the confines of the roadway or adjacent to the roadway. So again, it's a competitive grant program. We were fortunate enough to be able to put this grant in with the help of our fantastic grants department. We were awarded this grant. And the idea behind this grant is to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries with the ultimate goal of being zero deaths on any of Rapid City's roadways. So it outlines some goals for the safety of the region and then comes up with a, an action plan on what we can do to accomplish those goals. There are multiple requirements that you can see on the slide, including leadership commitment, goal setting, a planning structure, a lot of safety analysis, obviously, public engagement and collaboration, and then some recommendations on policy and process change and a list of projects. And then of all, of course, we also have progress reports that we need to keep going with this, to make sure we're getting stuff done. So in doing the research, we figured out that seventy percent of all fatal and serious injuries in Rapid City occur on only eleven percent of the roads in Rapid City. So they're very concentrated along generally our, our larger arterial streets and heavier traveled streets. So we'll use this data to develop a plan that takes a look at the entire Rapid City region and prioritizes these areas for some safety improvements. And then recommend some strategies that can be done and, and implement those to, to increase the safety on those roadways. We also need a leadership commitment. We'll have a resolution going forward at our next legal and finance meeting and then the city council on, you know, helping to achieve these goals and working towards zero roadway deaths. So in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three timeframe, thirty-one fatalities and two hundred and three serious injuries in Rapid City. That's, that's a lot. We'd like to reduce that quite a bit. So again, the goal is reduce that to zero by twenty fifty, and so we'll use the safe system approach and some community commitment. So the safe system approach is based on a federal highway administration, I want to say this, priority list, focuses on both human mistakes and human vulnerability. So people make mistakes and when mistakes happen, people are vulnerable to the consequences of those. So the safe system approach looks at five different factors. I don't have a graphic for this, but we think of it as like pieces of Swiss cheese. So if you put a piece of Swiss cheese in front, there's some holes, so things will get through those holes. If you stack another piece of Swiss cheese behind it, some of those holes get covered. There still be may, maybe more holes. So the more pieces of Swiss cheese you put on top of each other, the less likely your mayonnaise is to get down into the rest of your sandwich. So a big part of this was public and stakeholder engagement. We did some pop-up events. You can see me in a couple of those pictures. We went to the Bike Fest in twenty twenty-four. We had some trunk or treat events. We did some public open houses. We did some stakeholder events with young drivers. We did some, some with downtown business owners. And then right now, starting this afternoon, we will have an online public meeting that'll be available on the R C safestreets dot com website. So you'll be able to look at the draft report on that and then all the meeting materials will be on that as well. Like I said, we worked with a lot of different groups throughout the community, trying to get input and see their concerns. And we came up with these focus areas. So number one focus area is angle crashes. Those are the types of crashes that happen at intersections, usually signalized intersections. In the data, it showed a lot of emphasis on younger and older drivers. Dark conditions, of course, it's harder to drive at night and vulnerable road users. Those are those people that are in the roadway but outside of a vehicle. So people walking, biking, scootering in wheelchairs, things like that. Of course, with Sturgis in the area, we have a lot of motorcycle crashes within the area. And then alcohol is also a big factor in a lot of our serious and fatal injury crashes. Skip that one. So our major projects, we're looking at some really high ranking. These are like the capital improvement projects on actual roadway changes. We've got some systemic projects, which are more low-cost strategies that don't take a bunch of investment, but can have some effect on it. And then policy strategies on behavior modification and policy change and best practices. So the next steps, we'll look at revising our design manuals and practices. We've got another grant in for Safe Streets and Roads for All to conduct additional road safety audits. So we'll take those high priority locations and really drill down on those and see what we can do to increase safety in those areas. We'll adopt the safety resolutions and we'll train our staff and partners. Just some examples of things that Safer Streets Toolkit does. So we've got traffic calming, as you can see on the left. So, you know, using some bump outs, you know, keeping this, the roadway a little narrower and just in visual to keep people slowed down. The middle one is roadway reconfigurations. You may have heard of those called road diets before. So we've got a great example we did when, in one in Rapid City is a Canyon Lake Drive. It used to be a four-lane. Now it's a three-lane with a center turn lane and bike lanes. That really helps increase safety. And then also looking at doing some sort of bike lanes throughout the community as well to protect those bicycle users. We've got some recommended projects. Again, we'll take a look at some of these closer as we move on through this process. And we'll do annual progress reports as required as part of the program. Those will be posted on the city website. And then we've got the website quick QR code up there. And if you have any other questions about it, I am here to stand for those.
Haven?
Yes, thank you for that, that report. I, I think that was interesting and appreciate the, the work that you put in on that KIP. And I, I think it is a, it, it's, I, I good to get the information out to the community on this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. And you will see a final report in December, most likely.
The chair recognizes Kelly.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kudos to you guys for putting together this report. I think a lot of this stuff, you know, might not make it out into the public eye unless it's brought up, you know, during these things, sort of similar to the comprehensive plan. Question, you know, since I've been back here ten years plus, I've noticed in gradual increase in, you know, aggressive driving, speeding, running red lights. I mean, I don't know if you guys have noticed this too. It's concerning to me. I'm an ex-cop, I'm an ex-CO. I kind of have a, you know, thing for crime. Was there buy-in and/or collaboration with R C P D on, you know, the roadways in general, this, this particular grant, project that was awarded?
Absolutely. As part of our stakeholder meetings, we did meet with R C P D and they gave us some input on the report as well. And so we'll take their input into the, into the report and we'll work with them on some of those strategies for behavior modification because that's a very strong component of this.
Awesome. And one more quick question. Was there a collaboration between, you know, city staff and, you know, the federal, you know, highways, DOT? You know, you guys ID exchange on things like this, on what, what works and what doesn't?
All the time. But since this is a city project, we really focused on city roadways, ones that we have jurisdiction over. So as we looked at the crash data, a lot of those crashes happen along the major arterial streets in town, which are also state highways, like Omaha Street and Mount Rushmore Road. So we took those out of the equation on this. Those weren't really included in the report because the city doesn't have any jurisdiction over those. And since this grant was awarded to the city, so we're focusing on those streets that are city streets where we can make these improvements without having to work with DOT on them.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Vicki.
Thank you. So in align with what you said, Kelly, there has been such tight collaboration on a need to improve our streets in Rapid City that at last city council meeting, there was an item on the agenda that brought forward an ordinance that no longer allows for pedestrians to stand in medians on arterial streets when that speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour or more. And the whole goal of that is just to improve safety, not only for the person standing there, but for the driver that may have to try to avoid them and then in essence, hitting someone in another lane.
All right. The chair recognizes Eric. Eric Higginson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Solid work, KIP. And I would agree with some of Kelly's comments. There's some pretty increasingly aggressive driving on some of these larger arterials, Omaha for one. And I don't know if this will help address that, but I hope it does. I'd like to move approval of the, approve the Safe Streets and Roads for All Safety Action Plan.
We have a motion from Eric and a second from Karen. Any further discussion? Let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that ends the consent item, consent calendar. Now we're beginning of the regular agenda items. Excuse me. We do have a speaker request for item number seven. So let's have two, five, P D zero, three, zero. Staff?
Hello again, Chair Commission. Item number twenty-five, P D zero, three, zero is a major amendment to a plan development overlay to expand an apartment complex. This property is located near the corner of East Anamosa Street and East Philadelphia Street. This is the property known as the Tall Grass Apartments Complex. This property in its entirety is twelve point one, six acres, zoned medium density residential district with the plan development overlay. Future land use of this property is urban neighborhood. And access to this phase of the apartment complex will be from East Philadelphia Street, which is classified as a collector's street on the city's major street plan. So this is being proposed as phase three of the Tall Grass Apartments Complex development. The initial plan development for this apartment complex was approved in two thousand and nineteen. And it was approved for a four-phase apartment development with ten total apartment buildings, providing a total of six hundred and seven dwelling units and then also a leasing office and a clubhouse. The final plan developments for phase one and phase two were approved in two thousand and twenty and also in two thousand and twenty-two. Phase one provided the leasing office and the clubhouse and three apartment buildings with a hundred and sixty-one dwelling units in total. Phase two provided three additional apartment buildings with another hundred and fifty-three total dwelling units. So what they are proposing here is to move into phase three. Phase three will be one apartment building, providing a total of ninety-nine dwelling units on the property. So you can kind of see how this lays out. This area in gray over here is future phase four, if phase four were to come into play. This area in gray over here is future Phase Four, if Phase Four were to come into play. They are proposing to plat Phase Three onto its own separate parcel, which would be approximately 4.51 acres in size. So you can see it kind of delineated over by itself right now. That does align with the way that Phase One and Phase Two were done as well. They are platted off as their own separate properties also. The initial plan development did approve an exception that will carry over if this major amendment is approved. That exception was to allow a four-story, 56-foot-tall building for the apartment complex in general. This apartment building that they are proposing will be 49 feet, six inches in height, four stories. So that does fall in alignment with that exception request that was previously granted. They are requesting an additional exception with this major amendment to reduce the front yard setback. Sorry, this is kind of really small. But to reduce the front yard setback right here along this eastern side of this property. These are four detached garage structures that will serve the tenants of this building. This garage structure on the south end, by code, must provide a 35-foot front yard setback. They are requesting a 20-foot front yard setback for that. So staff looked at what the surrounding development is and also the separation between that structure and the nearest structure. So south of this property is Phase One of this apartment development, with the closest structure being the poolhouse, which is located down here. So reducing that setback to 20 feet will still provide over 100 feet of separation between the detached garage and the poolhouse. So staff does not feel like reducing that setback would be injurious or detrimental. So staff is recommending approval of that exception if the major amendment does get approved. I do want to point out that Phase Three of this development will align with the design. Let me get to some elevations here, with the design of Phase One and Phase Two. So it will include some brick and stone accents. It will include some varied roof lines, and also some material variation. So you get a little bit of color differences in there. And then as far as parking goes, they are required to provide 149 parking spaces on this property by code. They are actually well exceeding that. They are proposing 124 surface parking spaces. Those four detached garages that I mentioned provide another 63 parking spaces. And then they are putting an underground parking facility in this one as well. I do believe Phase One and Phase Two have an underground parking component also. But they are putting an underground parking structure in here. You can see it, it's on the top here, and that will provide another 63 parking spaces. I think I said the garages were 63. The garages are 28. I apologize. And then underground is 63 parking spaces. They are also providing open space for this phase as well. So you can kind of see here, this hatched area all in here is going to be grass space. So that does count towards the open space requirement. In addition, the tenants of Phase Three do also have access to the community areas developed in Phase One, which are directly south here. And that includes a dog park right here. This is the clubhouse that has some eating areas, some seating areas, some community gathering areas. And then there's also a pool, an outdoor pool right here, that the tenants would have access to. And then in between here, this is like an outdoor shared space that has like some fire pits, some barbecue grills, things along those lines. So they'll have access to that space as well. One thing that we did note with this is they are proposing to extend water and sewer services from East Philadelphia Street across the southern property, across Phase One, to get to Phase Three. Public Works did note that that creates non-conforming services. So there is a stipulation in this report that either, when the building permit is submitted, they either need to change that so that the services do not cross property lines, or they need to get an exception through Public Works to allow for those, those sewer and water services to cross a different property. So I'll show you some pictures here. There's their open space exhibit as well, so you can kind of see a little bit clearer down here what that community space looks like. This is how they are proposing to plat this property. So this is the property that will contain Phase Three. This will be future Phase Four if that's developed. So this plat would come forward prior to building permit submittal. I do also want to point out that by code, the way that the property exists right now, upon building permit submittal, they would be required to install sidewalks along the entire frontage of both East Anamosa Street and East Philadelphia Street as the abut the property today. There is a stipulation in there that states that the sidewalks must be installed along all of the abutting frontages as they exist at the time of building permit submittal. So I do want to point out that if they plat this before the building permit is submitted, then that sidewalk is only required to be installed along this portion of East Philadelphia Street. And then the remaining sidewalk along East Philadelphia Street and up East Anamosa Street would come with Phase Four. So here is looking at the property from the access that goes through Phase One. So that apartment building would be approximately right here. You can see there is a little bit of a slope up to where Phase Two, or Phase One exists over here. This is looking down toward East Anamosa Street. This is looking up towards the apartment buildings that already exist. So this is the architectural design that this apartment building would maintain. This is looking towards the community area. So this is the dog park right in here. This is the poolhouse. This is the community, community clubhouse, and then the pool sits right in here. This is looking back towards East Philadelphia Street from the access. So this is approximately where that detached, that southernmost detached garage would be. Here you can see that they did post the required notification on the property. This is looking at it from East Philadelphia Street. This is East Philadelphia Street looking west, and East Philadelphia Street looking east. So their access would come from this same shared access right in here. So with that, staff is recommending approval, including the exception to reduce the front yard setback for that southernmost detached garage. And there are several stipulations noted in the staff report as well. I will stand for any questions.
Okay, we do have one speaker request from Mr. Brian Ball. If you would please step up to the microphone here and identify yourself on the microphone for our administrative purposes.
My name is Brian Ball, and I, I live just east of the Tall Grass Apartments on Abraham So my, Mike, I'm not here either for or against the apartments, but my concern is the traffic on Philadelphia and Anamosa. As it stands right now, Anamosa runs north-south, and many of us are having problems either making a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn because of the traffic. So I was hoping the planning commission would request that we get a traffic signal, for away preferably. I've seen two fender benders in the, in the past six weeks, and there's only a matter of time until somebody's really going to get hurt bad. People are, you have no, you have no visibility to the south on Anamosa if you're making, if you're turning from Philadelphia to Anamosa. The south side, you got, you got a slight curve to the east, and you can't see traffic until it gets within, say, 150 feet of that intersection. Like I said, it's, it's, it, somebody's going to get hurt bad. And anyhow, that's, that's my request. With more residents, it's just, it's just going to get worse. Plus, you've got people coming from Rapid Valley, they're coming through Homestead, and then taking that Anamosa route to get to the shopping. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. The chair recognizes Vicki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when this project first came in, they were required to bring in, excuse me, a traffic impact study. Planning Commission does not have the authority to identify whether or not an intersection should be signaled. But that traffic impact study does indicate that when warrants are met, then that signalization would be in place. When we look at another arterial street, let's say Fifth Street, the huge volume of traffic on it, and all those cross-section streets that don't have any signalization, they do have that stop sign that stops people, but they too have got to take caution when going right or left across that arterial street. This would be similar. Todd, perhaps you could assist us a little bit more. Is that a stop-signed intersection right now on Philadelphia?
Chair recognizes Todd.
Correct. There are stop signs on Philadelphia Street. The traffic study that was done did indicate that there's a potential for, a need for a signal by 2045. I don't believe the warrants are met today. I can double-check with our traffic engineer, but I'm, I'm sure the warrants are not met today, based on what's out there. But we do know that there may be a signal needed in the future for that area.
The chair recognizes Haven.
Thank you.
Hold on, Haven. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, appreciate Mr. Ball coming up and making those comments. And as Vicki pointed out, we don't have that authority, but you've, you've raised the issue with the city, and, and obviously, they've, they've considered it, and, and will be continuing to look at it in the future. So thank you for, for being here to present.
And the chair recognizes Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to give compliments on the common space and part of the designed pool and pet area. I think this is a real positive in, in the direction that these apartments and things are taking. Kudos to that. I think having that third space as part of the complex really bolsters quality of life, and, and it's a fine, fine amenity. Did you want to talk anymore about it? Did you have any more details about the, the common amenity? That's part of the overall recommendation, is that they use that space. All, all these, all these apartments end up using it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Vicki.
And remember, this is a campus project, so even though they needed the exception to that front yard setback, they're the adjacent property owner. It's still a part of this project. Because they're plating it off into a separate lot, it does, we have to apply all the regulations. But when we look at it, I think we have to keep in mind, this is a campus project. And Mr. Chair, if I might, getting to the neighbor, we certainly empathize with the fact that as development is occurring around him, it does change the traffic, and it does have an impact. You move into a neighborhood, you expect to be able to leave the neighborhood and venture out into the community, and there's a volume of traffic that we're accustomed to. And then development continues, things change, and we have to slow down, or it takes longer to get from point A to point B. That, we do acknowledge that, and that happens throughout the community. Many of you will recall, there was a time when Fifth Street didn't connect to Katrin Boulevard. So those of us that lived along Fifth Street, it was easy to enter and exit Fifth Street, and then the connection was made. And it's staggering how much traffic is now on that street. So your driving patterns and the time it takes to arrive at a destination has changed because of that traffic. But we do appreciate neighbors that come in and point these things out.
Alicia, is there something you want? Chair recognizes Alicia. Let me get a microphone for you.
For some reason, mine.
Hold on. If we can have Eric's mic for Alicia.
Mr. Chair, I don't know why my microphone isn't illuminated, but I have a comment kind of going off of Eric's. I also appreciate the common space. I do wonder why, what the intent was between creating separate parcels for the 12 acres. It seems like with this urban neighborhood, the opportunity of a lot of density could create, you know, requesting variances where you're pushing buildings to the outer side and creating courtyards. A lot of the open space seems to be between parking and the building, so I don't necessarily, I, I wonder why that was kind of chosen to have the open space at the moment somewhat exposed. I understand there'll be another, there's a nice view, and there'll be more properties developed, but just thinking about other ways to create courtyards and a sense of community between apartment buildings, since this all was under one developer instead of one-off structures. So I, I appreciate the open space and the community space, but wonder some of the intent behind it in terms of creating community with parking, splitting all of the, all the units.
Chair recognizes Vicki.
That's a good comment. Across the board, almost always, the reason why a developer does create separate lots is for loans. Banks require that they put that investment on separately described properties in case the market changes and they're unable to fulfill that obligation.
Alicia? Eric's mic for Alicia, please.
The technical issues, no, that, that makes sense to me. I think I also, you know, wonder about how, how it could be split up in a way where it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, parking structure, parking lot building, just thinking about the benefits of courtyard communities and being able to see your neighbors and still creating similar, if not greater, density and where common space is put. It seems like these separate parcels still share one common space, so just thinking about other ways to, to think about the opportunity of having 12 acres with this density of zoning. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great comments there, guys. I think that that's all good stuff on, on that space. I want to touch base on the traffic again, and although we don't have the ability to really change anything on this, I think it's, it's very important that with, what we did with Anamosa there is we created some opportunity to avoid some traffic on East North Street, and a lot of people are doing that. So I think it's really important that we take the extra steps to make sure that we look at that really hard, so we don't have the same kind of a situation we have at the mall, and we, we're behind the eight ball. So I hope that we can get this kicked up to the right level so that the, the public doesn't have to deal with a big problem here. I see a lot of traffic on that road, and I avoid East North Street by going that route. So I'm sure there's a lot of other people doing the same, so.
The chair recognizes Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This area has had a lot of development, and it's just amazing to see all the houses and the apartments and stuff up in, in that area. I just traveled there just recently, just to look around and see. And my, so my question isn't about this issue in front of us. I think this is done well. I mean, they've done a good job of doing all the, the building that they've got out there, but there is so much building. My question really is, overall, have we got any information on the number of apartments that are needed in this community? It seems like everywhere you turn, there's more apartments. And I get a lot of people asking me that question of, what, how many more are you going to do? So that's just an overall question.
Chair recognizes Vicki.
So we do keep our pulse on what housing is needed versus available, and there is a healthy vacancy number that you aim for, so that there's a little competition. It hopefully keeps the rents competitive. There was a time right after COVID that we were short everything. We were short apartments, we were short single-family homes, and then we had a surplus, and we had high vacancy across the board. That is no longer the case. Our population continues to increase, our vacancy rate is very low again, and so we're pushing towards needing additional units in all areas of the community.
Thank you, Vicki. I just wanted to see how that was going.
The public hearing on item 25PD030 is closed. Do we have any other discussion from the commission? Do we have a motion?
With the stipulations.
We have a motion of approval from Karen with stipulations. Do we have a second? And a second from Haven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Public hearing on item 25 PD 024 is hereby open.
So good morning. This is a final plan development overlay to allow a gas station and a car wash at 2915 Marlin Drive. So the property is owned general commercial district. It's located within a plan development designation, and it's located adjacent to an apartment complex, this orange area. Here is the apartment complex. So the future land use is mixed-use commercial. The property is going to be accessed by a proposed right-in, right-out approach off East Minnesota Street and then by a full access approach off Marlin Drive. A traffic impact study was submitted with this application, and it showed that the traffic impacts of this proposed development were quite minimal. East Minnesota Street is classified as a minor arterial street on the city's major street plan, and then Marlin Drive is classified as Collector Street on the city's major street plan. So this is the proposed site plan. The structural development is going to be located on the northern half of the property. They are, the car wash is going to be located south of the convenience store, and then the gas canopy is going to be located up here along Elkvale Road. So the applicant did request an exception as a part of this application to reduce the parking requirement from 42 spaces down to 36 parking spaces. And we recently, as staff recently approved a very similar exception for the Circle K on Campbell Street, and we're not aware of any parking issues as a result of granting that exception for that Circle K. So staff does feel like this is appropriate amount of parking for this facility. And this is the truck circulation plan. So as you can see, all the truck and camper camp traffic is being routed through Marlin Drive around the building, so enter and exit is through Marlin Drive. So this is the proposed landscaping plan. This building is going to be located approximately 345 feet from the nearest apartment building. The applicant is also doing a good job here with the landscaping buffer along Marlin Drive to further separate this development from the adjacent development. So those are evergreen trees, large evergreen trees that are being proposed along Marlin Drive. So on September 8, the applicant did hold a community engagement meeting just to discuss the project with nearby residents. So this was the invite that was sent out as part of that community engagement meeting. And then from my understanding, the residents that did attend that meeting were appreciative of the buffering that's being proposed to the residential. So this is just the floor plan of the convenience store, floor plan of the car wash. This building is going to be approximately 8,148 square feet in size. And then this is the proposed elevations. This building is going to be 23 feet in height. And then a 40-foot-tall gas pylon sign is being proposed at the corner of Elkvale Road and East Minnesota Street, and then a 30-foot-tall gas, another gas pylon sign is being proposed at the corner of East Minnesota Street and Marlin Drive. So public notice was posted on the property. This is looking north into the property from Marlin Drive. This is looking north down East Minnesota Street. There is a non-access easement along this roadway, and the applicant's going to be vacating a portion of this non-access easement to allow for the right-in and right-out approach. And this is looking south along East Minnesota, looking east, and looking west along Marlin Drive. So staff is recommending that this item be approved, subject to the stipulations outlined in the report. Standby for any questions, and the applicant is in the audience as well.
Okay, I don't have any requests. On second thought, yes, we do. Chair recognizes Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a very comprehensive submittal. I'm impressed. Very thorough, meets all requirements other than the parking reduction. I think it's quite appropriate, so I'm going to be supporting this. My compliments to the submission, though.
Chair recognizes Vicki. Sorry, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tanner, can you go back to the zoning map? So when this development was coming forward, there was a master plan submitted that showed that they were reserving some commercial nodes along Elkvale Road, exactly what we want to see. As a part of our open house discussions when we were updating our comprehensive plan, one of the number-one concerns that we heard from residents throughout the city is that there's not enough neighborhood commercial anymore. And so whether it's Orchard Meadows, and you can think of the commercial that's there, Johnson Ranch, and now in this development too, we're finally getting that commercial node so that everyone doesn't have to drive as far, and this one is fairly remote in location. I applaud the applicants for having the neighborhood meeting. When the rumor hit the streets that there was going to be a convenience store, the phones started ringing, and the neighbors were very concerned. And so sitting down with them and addressing their concerns, so that we don't have anyone in the audience today, which is surprising, that would still continue that, just shows what that transparency and bringing the neighborhood in and letting them be, have an influence on the design, really brings this project and makes it a part of this community. So we applaud them for doing that as well. This has been a great project to work on.
Chair recognizes Mike Kwasthny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So during that meeting, and that's great that you get public meeting and get all that input, I'm assuming that these people that wrote the letters that we have attached to this were at this meeting, and so the signage, as far as they were concerned about the signage and how bright it was and whether or not it was going to affect their housing area, so was that taken care of?
Chair recognizes Vicki.
Mr. Chair, and if you could go to the aerial, Tanner. So the signs do meet sign code, and they have automatic dimmers on them, so as the night darkens, the sign's illumination has to lessen as well. And when you look to see what is closest to it, those are the apartments that are there. So that's somewhat transient housing. Many of them are designed so that there's not windows shining out onto the street. The single-family residential homeowners that have these concerns live somewhat distanced from this, and most all instances, they won't see the property from their homes only when they're driving down the street.
Okay, I understand that. With that said, though, the apartment buildings might have an effect from these signs? Is that what I heard?
No, no different than any other commercial development adjacent to residential that exists throughout the community. The sign code requires that these signs dim automatically as the night skies come into play. So they can be illuminated. You saw the LED that shows what the cost of the gas is going to be per gallon, but that has to dim automatically so that it isn't as apparent as the night skies darken.
Sure, I'm familiar with the code there. So I guess, is there, at the height of the sign, is there any option for decreasing that that would reduce any possible effect on the apartments?
You have the right to request that it be reduced. However, it does comply with the sign code.
Correct. So I guess maybe the people that were at the meeting, this was not brought up as, there was nobody from the apartments, per se?
Perhaps we could have the applicant speak to the-
That'd be great.
We have the applicant. If we can, if you could please identify yourself, and you have something to answer the question for Mr. Kwasthny.
Sure. My name's Steve Harrison. I work with McFarland Johnson with the civil engineers. I prepared the plans and the application for this development. With the sign down on Marlin in East Minnesota, the apartments on that Marlin Drive side don't have any windows. But what we can do, if it'll help, is we could take that sign that's at that corner of East Minnesota and Marlin and shift it up towards where our right-in, right-out is. Yeah, so right around where the hand is shown, if that will help. It gets it further away.
Yeah, so right here, and then the other sign is right there.
Yeah, and we could-
Black symbol.
And we could take the one at the corner of Marlin and East Minnesota and shift it up towards where our right-in, right-out is, if that will help.
And then your building might block it a little bit as far as that goes in that circumstance, doing it that way?
From certain angles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess what's going to happen is, as signs go up, it's an amazing thing, the tallest sign has to be beat so that somebody else can see. And so that's my only concern for the community. We're, this is fairly clean in this area, and so we're starting, you're creating the beginning, so to speak, it looks like, for signage right here. And so we have an opportunity, I guess is all I'm looking at, is an opportunity to not create the sign battle. So anything we can do to try to reduce that effect on neighborhoods is, I think, important as we move forward in our community as a whole.
I understand that. Plus, with the, we do have that extensive landscaping along the Marlin Drive, which should help block from that view as well.
I think you did a great job as far as, I think, the design and the looks of the property. It's not a problem at all with that. That's great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Haven.
Thank you. As I reviewed the public comments last night, you know, it came to mind, and I think Vicki pointed out here, the zoning on that property along Elkvale, which is where this project is going to be located, is general commercial. And I guess I have a couple of questions then. I assume there are uses that, that, that property could be put to that would not require any approval from the city in the general commercial area?
Chair recognizes Vicki.
This is in a plan development overlay, so anything that happens in those commercial lots, the pink to the north is office commercial, the red is general commercial. You will see those every time.
Oh, okay, thank you, yes. And then I would explain then, you know, why the, this particular applicant made the application here before the planning commission. So thank you. And I, I may be surprised that the people that did write those public comments aren't here, and maybe their questions and concerns have been responded to. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Karen.
Did Vicki, do you have something you need to add before I speak?
I was just going to comment then, when we talk about competitive signs, we have a sign code. We have it for a reason. It limits the height of signs in general commercial. So even if they're at that maximum height, no one else can go above it unless they're coming to you for variance.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the comment about the signs. Where I live, there's a Circle K up by me, and it was something before Circle K bought it. But they put a sign up there on that corner, which is necessary. And from my house, which is a long way away, that sign was right in, right in my house all the time, and I was so frustrated by it. And now I have a tree that covers that whole sign. I don't even notice it anymore. So, you know, it works out. But I think signage is important when you're close to neighbors. The other comment I have is, you know, as apartments go in and people start moving, you need more gas stations to fulfill all that. I mean, it's just necessary. And I get a lot of people ask why are there so many gas stations? Well, you know, it's necessary, and this is a roadway that doesn't have anything on it and it's out there kind of far. And so I can think, I think this is a good spot for it, so I will be in favor of this item.
Chair, excuse me, Chair recognizes Kelly.
Thank you. Compliment and a question. Compliment, the green, the landscaping points, you guys exceeded the landscaping points. We really appreciate that. I think Circle K does a good job in general of greening up their facilities, so that's really welcome here in our community. The question is, this is just for my own reference, I guess, did you exceed the landscape points based on any, you know, public feedback, or, you know, is that just part of Circle K's culture in general to, you know, naturalize, I guess you could say, a gas station? We appreciate it, believe me.
And sir, could you please identify yourself again?
Sure. It's Steve Harrison with McFarland Johnson Engineers for the site, civil engineers for the site. So we prepared this plan prior to our public comment meeting. So in general, Circle K does like to really landscape and make their stores look inviting and nice. So, thank you.
The Chair recognizes Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just out of curiosity, will there be an electronic vehicle charging station at this facility?
Go ahead, sir.
Steve Harrison, McFarland Johnson, civil engineers for the site. We do do an analysis to see if there is a need for electric charging stations on every new development Circle K that occurs, and this one didn't see that need, so we will not be installing any electric vehicle charges at this site.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to approve the final plan development overlay. I know that this is final action then?
We have a motion to approve with a second, but we need to clarify the location of the signs, because I believe that there was a change in the location of these signs if we can move forward.
That's up to the motion maker.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll amend my motion with the footnote of the discussion hat on movement of a sign. Fair? Clear? Do you want to second that still, Alicia?
Okay. We have a motion to approve from Eric with a second from Alicia, and as laid out by, where the sign is going to move and the staff stipulations. All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Our next item is for the staff's planning commission and discussion items. Do we have anything from the staff at this point?
Yes, Kinsley's going to be making a great presentation on open meetings.
All right. And the Chair recognizes Kinsley.
Can you guys, can you help me get, how do I get to the version where it's?
There you go. You just wanted Andre to get up.
Yeah, well, I wanted the version where it was, there we go. Okay. It's showing me different from what's up there. Okay, thank you. Kinsley, go up from the city attorney's office. Thank you, Chair, Mission, Commission members. Okay, so there was a state law change having to do with open meetings, and it was this past session, and the requirement is now in state law for the different commissions, boards, governing bodies, whatnot, that are subject to the open meetings requirements, to have a review annually of the open meetings laws. So that's what we're doing right now. So the Attorney General's Office has put together a very handy brochure that talks about conducting the public's business in public, and it's just a nice little review of the open meetings laws, which, you know, a lot of you are very familiar with open meetings laws. But for, you know, for some people who aren't as familiar, it's a good little read. It actually has a lot of the statutes that are pertinent and just a review of some of the big questions that they get asked. So this was attached to the meeting agenda, if anyone's interested in reviewing that. That was revised in 2025, and it is a short little eight pages. But it talks about things like who does the open meetings laws apply to, and can public meetings be recorded? public meetings be recorded, things like that. So the general rule, all official meetings of public bodies are open to the public. There are some exceptions to this, and when in doubt, we can just defer back to that general rule that a meeting is open to the public. Open meetings laws apply to the city governing body, AKA the city council, obviously, but also public bodies that are created by ordinance or resolution, such as appointed boards, task forces, and committees, so long as the body has authority to exercise sovereign power. And one might ask, what is sovereign power? It's basically that situation where you have the ability to regulate the conduct of others. So for city council, it has to do with things like passing ordinances and resolutions and things like that. But this, you know, zoning board and planning commission, it deals with things like granting variances or conditional use permits, things like that. So you have the power to regulate the conduct of others, and you're not merely serving in an advisory role. For those bodies that we have that are just advisory bodies, those ones are not technically subject to the open meeting, open meetings records, but it's always something where we like to keep those open to the public as well. But this body is obviously open to the open meetings laws. So the importance of the rules, it is to promote government transparency, and a nice quote that we have from one case back in the 80s was, "To prohibit actions being taken at secret meetings, where it is impossible for the interested public to become fully informed and to detect proper influences." There was a bit of a change in the definition for official meetings, and before July, the definition is as shown. And what got added into this specific statutory section was some, some language about electronic means and having a meeting by electronic means, including email, instant messaging, social media, text messages, platforms, that type of thing. So it's just that reminder to everyone that if there, that you could potentially conduct an official meeting by email. So this is one of those reasons why, if you ever see us sending out an email, maybe it's one to the entire planning commission, it would probably be by BCC so that no one can just simply reply back to everyone else and then inadvertently create a situation where we have an official meeting. We don't want that. And if you were ever to send out an email, that's a good, good reminder that, you know, we do so in a specific way so that we don't inadvertently create an official meeting. Okay, so one thing that I wanted to point out is that we have certain situations where, you know, a public body might attend another public body's meeting, and it's not considered an official meeting if that other public body is basically providing for the notice requirements that this body, for instance, has. So there's also a situation where there's an exception if members attend a press conference called by the representative or a representative of the body. That's not technically considered an official meeting. So one of the, the two big questions that we have for official meetings, let's see, where did that one go? Well, the two big questions that we have are, is a quorum there, and is official business, public policy going to be discussed? So this slide just has a couple or a few examples of situations. So let's say there's a sporting event, when you have five members of the planning commission that are going to be at that sporting event, and there's no prior planning. Well, if there's a quorum there, then we move on to the next question. Are people going to be discussing official business or public policy? Probably not. So if you're all just happen to be at, you know, someplace like LNI together, well, I'm guessing you're not discussing public policy or certain issues. So you don't have to worry about that. Let's say there's a ribbon cutting for a new development or business in town. Could be a similar situation. Are you discussing or deciding public policy or business? Probably not. There's probably a lot of niceties exchanged, but, but that is one where there are instances where we might expect a quorum, and so we can actually provide a certain type of notice to the public saying that, and this is mostly for a non-governmental, an event hosted by a non-governmental entity to which a quorum of the public body is invited. So there's a certain group that thinks that, you know, the planning commission had a big role in something, and so they want to invite all of you. We can send out this notice to the public so that they know that there's potentially going to be a quorum there, and basically just talk, gives that, gives that a notice. So for a notice for an official meeting, it has to be one that's given for a continuous 24 hours immediately preceding the official meeting, and it has to be posted at the principal office of the entity holding the meeting. So if you've ever taken notice of the postings that are done outside the building, that's where they normally are, and that fulfills this requirement. So the notice of the meeting requires certain information, and the notice has to be posted on the public entity's website, if there's a website, and obviously we have a website, so we do that. So there, I think there was a little bit of a change to teleconference information from a different bill this past session, and any meeting may be conducted by teleconference. A member is deemed present if the member answers present to the roll call that's conducted. And there's a specific voting rule that has to do with a teleconference situation. So each vote at the meeting held by teleconference may be taken by voice vote, but if somebody votes in the negative, then we have to have a roll call vote. Now, meeting materials. There are certain requirements that go along with making certain materials available to the public, and these are the rules right here. They, it's generally that, you know, if you've got something that's going to be given to the, the public body, then it needs to be available for the public as well. And if it's not something that's going to be, going to be given out in advance, it can just be available in the meeting room, that type of thing. Executive session, you really don't have to deal with this. I don't think I've ever seen planning commission go into executive session. So these are just some info points where there's certain reasons that you could have executive, closed session, and one that I can think of that might have to do with planning commission would be related to litigation, but I've never seen that. So these are just things that probably won't really apply to planning commission for the most part. And just the general lawyer thing, nothing in the presentation is intended to be legal advice or an official opinion. If anybody has any specific questions, just call up to my office, and you can reach out, and we can discuss the specific legal question. And there's a list of some emails. Anybody have any questions?
When we have a planning commission, commission meeting, the agenda is sent out in advance, but that's, that same agenda is available to the public at the same time, is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. It's posted on the website.
So in discussion with the email that you pointed out, because that could constitute a meeting, since it's sent to everybody at the same time, well, my experience is, I have never seen any replies on any of those agendas that are sent out via email, so I just want to make that clear. We don't discuss it until we get here.
Absolutely.
That's been my experience.
Absolutely. And, you know, there are exceptions for situations where you're, if you're planning a time for a meeting, so let's say there needed to be a special planning commission meeting called, that email chain where people are replying to set a meeting or something like, you know, getting the agenda, that would not be considered the official meeting.
And just to clarify again, if there is such a meeting, it has to be a quorum. So that has to be established first clearly, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be, you know, it would be tricky with, with the email setup where it would seem that you would need a quorum to, to reply, that people are actually, but it, but it's just one of those situations where we don't really want to get, have to get an open meetings question on this, so we just generally try to send things out so that people can't reply and then create that open meeting situation.
And that's why I bring it up. I mean, again, my experience, it's never happened. I mean, if, if anybody's replied, it's just that I'm going to be at the meeting, period.
Absolutely.
It's not discussed. Haven?
You mentioned the executive session, and, and we haven't done that, but I did have a question. If we did want to go in an executive session, I was just kind of contemplating how we would do that. Basically, you've got to clear the, the room with only the planning commission left. I don't know, maybe if you had any comment on that, if, if we ever wanted to do it, we should know how, how that would be accomplished.
Yeah. So actually, it would be, you would, prior to the meeting, we'd have an item on the agenda talking about executive session, and we'd say the reason why you're going to go into an executive session, and we don't need to clear the meeting room, actually. It would be the manner, the members of the planning commission going to a separate space and having that executive session, and it would be a session that would just be on that topic. We have to make sure that, you know, the discussion doesn't stray off to something else, which I, you know, that's, that's one of those things where it's just a reminder, not that it would happen. But then after you get done with an executive session, you would come back into the meeting room, and if it's something that needed some sort of action, that would also be an agenda item after the executive session for the action to be taken, because the action itself has to be taken in the official meeting.
So would the executive session have to be on the agenda then? Be, that was put out?
Yes.
Notice to the public?
Yep, yep, and the reason for it, too.
Chair recognizes Vicki.
So executive sessions, it's limited what you can discuss in those. Basically, it's for litigation, if the city's getting sued over something, or we're going to sue someone, and for personnel issues, again, that are at the highest level. And that, all of those obligations and authorities lie with the city council, not with the planning commission. I don't see, in the 30 years I've been here or going forward, any reason that planning commission would ever call it an executive session.
And the other thought I had is that, you know, if, I've never seen this with the planning commission, there would, there would be more than four or five or six of us that would happen to be at the same place. But, you know, I, I do see the issue with public perception, so we happen to be there, and, and they say, well, did you discuss anything? Oh, no, no, no. So, but I can see the public perception being, well, I wonder if they were, were discussing something. I don't know, that's not really a question, just an observation, you know, making it, making sure that we're aware of that so that presumably that won't occur.
Chair recognizes Eric Hicas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's just a joke, but if we're all five at LNI, I assume we'd have to be sitting together to be considered, not just in the same building, correct, attorney?
Yes.
Counselor?
It would be within each other's presence, unless, unless somehow, you know, you all put up big signs and were, vote this way.
There is a chance that, you know, Pat and I and Kelly and Alicia and Mike could all be at the LNI at the same time. That is a real possibility, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
I like the LNI.
Okay, Vince can be there, too.
Don't put up the vote no sign.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have any further discussions? And, all right. There being no further business, do we have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, go ahead, Eric. Apologize.
Sorry. This is not me soapboxing. This is me giving a warm welcome to Pat Roslin, to our planning commission. It's really good to see you back in public service, and really happy that you're part of this. I think you'll be a good addition to our team, Pat.
Vicki?
Yeah, my apologies. We should have probably done that at the start of the meeting. The meeting just seemed to be early today. But going forward, just note that Eric and Alicia are both now voting members. Pat is alternate number one. The alternate number two position is vacant. We are going to be bringing forward a proposal to nominate Gary Sabres in that role, and that will be on an upcoming city council meeting, and then we'll be fully seated at the dius again.
In my defense, Pat, I just, I'm just so used to seeing you here, so I just automatically thought, yeah, he's supposed to be here. Where were you yesterday? No. Are there any other items we need to discuss? Again, there being no further business to discuss, do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn from Karen, and a second from Eric, or Pat? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I just want to let everybody know that I don't have a cold. It's allergies, so you're, I'm not spreading anything here.